Consideration of presentation regarding department head identified opportunities to improve employee recruitment and retention and B consideration of recommend recommended revisions to county personnel rules, and I will turn this over to CIO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to welcome Pam Samak, our HR Director, and Diana.
I want to welcome Pam Samak, our HR Director, and also Diana Rico, our HR Analyst, both here with us today. I'm going to present part of this item, and Pam and Diana will present the rest. So, as you recall, when you had your annual governance workshop on March 11th, at that time, we were focused on the state of the county report, but we also advised that in preparing for that governance workshop, we had met with department heads about those issues, and also about recruitment and retention of employees, because the stability of our workforce and closing the gap on the employee vacancy rate is really the key to accomplishing the vision of your board. And so, we had a couple of collaborative meetings with department heads. They came up with a number of ideas and recommendations for some fairly simple policy changes that could be made, and it was their belief that these changes could make it easier to get staff onboard and hopefully improve our retention rate as well. And so, I want to start by thanking the department heads for their participation. Some of them were here earlier today. I see a couple, so appreciate those that are here. It's been a long day, so they may not have all been able to stay, but they were all involved in the process. And after they formulated their initial round of ideas and recommendations, we took those to the Class and Comp Committee and really kind of drilled down, ultimately leading to the work of HR in the actual policy change recommendations that we have for your consideration today. So, what the department has told us at that time was, for applicants, in other words, for employment candidates, we needed to make policy change to improve candidate interview processes and to better calibrate the need for pre-employment physicals. There are a limited number of classes that require a full-on physical, and this delays hiring. It takes a while to get that scheduled and done. Department has also told us that we needed to enhance our recruiting efforts, beginning with training on how to better use social media to broaden candidate pools. So, in other words, use social media to reach candidates really where they are. Department has also asked for skills testing for applicants to make sure people are proficient in tools like Microsoft Office, Excel, PowerPoint, et cetera, for the positions that require that. And for current employees, Department has recommended a streamlined employee performance evaluation form and human resources training in a number of areas. And so, as I said, in the weeks since then, Pam and her staff have worked very diligently to prepare some changes for your consideration today that she'll present in just a moment. This is not an entire rewrite of the personnel rules, but we all acknowledge that they need more work. What today is about is really focusing on some quick fixes that the department heads indicated would really help move things along. So, Pam?
Good afternoon. I am Pam Samak.
You just need to wait for Sam to turn you on.
Put it pretty close to your mouth, Pam.
Okay. Good afternoon. Pam Samak, Director of Human Resources, and Diana Rico, Deputy Director of Human Resources. And in February, we sent out a recruitment survey trying to ascertain how departments felt about the recruiting process, what they knew about it, what they liked, what they didn't like. We got some interesting results. It's clear that our 18 pages of recruitment rules are quite confusing to them. So, that would be one thing, and we will discuss some simplifications and modifications to those rules to allow the departments a little more flexibility. The other part is that we, it is clear that we need to create like a guide and some training and conduct training so they know what's possible, so they know the information that needs to go in NeoGov, also so we could get better data on time to hire and the information we need, but they have to do part of the work, and HR has to do part of the work. So, going forward, we will be creating some NeoGov training and training the departments and the end-users in the information we really need to collect to get some meaningful data. So, in order to improve and streamline the recruitment rules, we looked at the language, which was fairly complex, and we tried to simplify it and tried to create a little more clarity where within the rules, sometimes they refer to seven different sections within the rule, and you've got to flip through it. So, we've tried, there's some redundancy, but we've tried to explain what each role was and make it easier to understand. One of the biggest tools that the department has and that we're recommending that we change is we've got some great extra-help employees. Currently, they're not allowed to apply for promotional-only recruitment. This is a change that most departments requested, so we are requesting that now our extra-help employees, who in some cases have been with us many years, and we know their work ethic, we know their abilities, now they're able to apply for promotional-only recruitments. We also added some additions and to disqualifications based on department head input, and in some cases, you get the same applicants who will apply for every job opening, and although they may meet the minimum qualifications, the department is interviewing the same person five, six, 10 times. So, if they've interviewed that person two times within one year, and they made a determination that this person would not meet the department needs, now the department may ask for a disqualification based on having previously interviewed the candidate. If the applicant has applied to multiple positions and failed to show up, now the department head has the flexibility to request that this person just be removed from the list, because they're taking up a spot, we're setting up a schedule, and on a regular basis, they're not showing up. Qualified applicants who have previously quit a current county job with no notice, walking off the job, the department head, if they apply for the same department, may request that person be removed from the eligibility list. Now, unranked, untested eligibility list will now include 15 candidates rather than 10. This gives the department more flexibility and eliminates the need to do a panel interview for under 15 applicants. This will greatly speed up the process, because you don't have to convene a panel, find a panel. Sometimes convening a panel can add three weeks to the recruitment. Applicant testing, HR will be working with the departments to develop applicant testing as a part of the screening process where necessary. That way, they know what skillsets the applicant truly has, and they're not extending the recruitment process in the interview process doing another test. Oral interviews, we're now going to include, which it's always been a part of it, but now they may do a phone interview, a phone screen as a part of the interview process, a Zoom meeting. We're just specifying multiple ways to conduct the interview process, that it doesn't have to be in-person, with Zoom being such a wonderful tool. Also, you can get a pre-screen and do a pretty good phone interview and not have somebody come in to meet the department or the panel. This, again, gives the department more flexibility. HR will create NeoGov training. We will create an interview guide with interview questions that departments can use. Also, assessment forms, which will help document the interview process and outline the next steps. So, those are the main changes, other than some language, to the recruitment rules that we're recommending today. We also took a look at all of the jobs, and I looked at 15 years' worth of workers' comp data and made a recommendation to change 50 positions from physicals to medical questionnaire only, which will also help streamline, because oftentimes, because of the lack of ability of getting physicals, sometimes that can add a month to the process, to the recruitment process. So, in looking at that data, we looked at the position, how physical it is, and then what type of injuries happened with that position to identify if there are things that would be caught in a pre-employment physical. We believe that the questionnaire answers most of those questions, and in attachments, B, thank you, we made the recommendations to switch those to questionnaire only. In addition, we streamlined the evaluation form, met with the department heads. They really like the new format. This should help reduce the number of late evals, make it easier to document the evaluation process, and helps each of the departments and the employee going forward. That is the end of my recommendations. Do you have questions?
Vice Chair?
I don't have a question, but these seem like really easy fixes that will save a lot of time. So, I just really appreciate the work that's been done on this, and I look forward to seeing how fast we can, you know, have these new employees move through the process.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you for this. I think it's good for us to review these things, especially as we are looking to reduce our vacancies. We want to make sure that the process is as efficient and as least burdensome as possible, both for the applicant and also the hiring department. Went through this with a fine-tooth comb. I did send a lot of stuff over to Ms. Samak as well as CIO Hutchinson. I wanted to read at least a few of those, because some of them is just typographical errors, and I'm not going to go over that. There was a lot of places where I was a little concerned on the, what's the right term to use, on the capability of the Human Resources Director to take actions for what I believe should be the hiring department, such as on Section 505 on Number 2, and Section 505 is regarding, 505 is on Page 5 of the document on Number 2. It says, "For any recruitment, Human Resources may direct that a recruitment be closed prior to the announced closing date. Human Resources shall not close a recruitment until the recruitment has been open for a minimum of five days." In my opinion, that should be the hiring department that makes that decision to close a recruitment, not necessarily a Human Resources Director. And obviously, there needs to be communication and things like that, but it just seems like that gives just the power to Human Resources. And I, in my opinion, I see Human Resources as a resource for the hiring department in order to obtain the staffing that they need, and that should be a decision coming from the department that requested the hiring process in the first place. And there was a-
Let me share-
Yeah, before you go on, could we respond to that one?
Yes. So, actually, that rule came into place in 2018, and back in that day, we used to get a lot of applicants. We could have 60 applicants for an office assistant job. And so, that rule came into place so that if we got a number of applicants, say in that case, like 50, the HR department would consult the hiring department and say, "We have enough qualified applicants. We'd like to close the recruitment and begin the selection process." So, it didn't come like out of a, HR just randomly decided to close a recruitment. It's always at the behest of the department, or because we feel like we have enough qualified applicants and we can begin the selection process to limit the amount of time for the recruitment. And I can tell you, I have now been here three years. I have never closed a recruitment to date.
Right. And I understand that, and you said you always at the behest of the hiring department. And so, I just, if it's always, then why not put that in the language? And there's also no, if we reach a certain amount, there's no qualifying statement of if we have 60, which, good God, that's a lot of-
Let that be glorious.
That's a lot of processing of paperwork and sitting down for potential interviews. I get that we don't want to just be interviewing all day, every day for 365 days a year, just to find the one person.
At that stage of the process, though, the hiring department wouldn't know how many applications have been received, because HR is the department that tends what is coming into NeoGov, and then takes those applications and screens them to determine if applicants are qualified and should be placed on a hiring list. So, the hiring department wouldn't know if that scenario had occurred until HR contacted them and said, "Hey, we've got 60 applications. Is that enough? Shall we close it?"
And I get that, but my opinion still stands that if you're getting that communication to the hiring department, I feel the hiring department should be the final say to say, "Yes, let's go ahead and close this down," since they're the one that asked in the first place to fly it. There's-
We could certainly add that as a clarifier to the language to make it more clear.
Yeah, and I would be perfectly fine with that, too. On Section 504, just to back up a little bit, the recruiting, recruitment posting, it says, allow, let me read it specifically. If the department is choosing to include-
Supplemental question.
It just doesn't say something. Not all standard, in my opinion. If we ask, if I asked you as a director to fly a position, I would expect that it goes through the standard process of posting, but I know that there are special positions that might require special type of posting. And to me, there should be like somewhere in there that says, "Any special request should be submitted to the Human Resources Director." At that point, you would be able to make the decision.
Actually, that's done in the NeoGov process. So, the department opens the requisition and gives us instructions on where to post. So, it doesn't get open until they select that as a part of the requisition process. It's not in the recruitment rules, but it's in the NeoGov process.
Okay. Another place, just to move on, on Section 603, minimum qualification appeals. It says that you have five calendar days to appeal. Before that, I was reading through the red line stuff. It used to be 10 calendar days, and further on in the document, it says five working days. And one of the reasons that it was, that was crossed off was if it happens to fall on a holiday, then they'll extend it. Here, there's no extensions, there's no nothing, and it's five calendar days. I know we have our holiday break that we have during winter. That could potentially be those five calendar days. We're not there to respond. Somebody could submit something. I would love to see it just say working days again, just to make sure that we're there to process and we're there to respond rather than five calendar days.
Sure. And if, during the holiday period, we kind of build that into the posting so that we would be available, and the reason we lessen that time was, again, to lessen the recruitment, because you can't move through the process till the appeal process is ended. And so, in trying to streamline the process, that was one of the ways that they did that. But if I got an appeal on Sunday, I would look at it on Monday. We're fairly-
I think flexible with that. I think this point should be deferred to the Class and Comp Committee, though, because this has the potential to slow down recruitment if we extend that appeal period. And so-
And just to let you know, on Section 606 is another appeal for the selection process, and it says five working days. And I was just trying to make it consistent with our other processes of appeals.
Yeah.
So, that's why I was bringing it up, especially with seeing what was crossed out from before versus the change. And I think that before, it was very cognizant of calendar days, not always working with the type of holidays that we have and the type of days off that we have seen. And maybe before, we were thinking more along the lines of, "We don't work on Friday," and maybe now it's different. But that was definitely something that came up. Then, there's one whole part to this that I don't see Board of Supervisor interview process or Director process to recruit directors. It talks about all of the ways to go through the interviews and everything, but there's nothing that seems specific to what we do here. I'm wondering if that's completely separate from this or not.
It's not separate, but you are considered a department head for hiring purposes. So, that's why it also states that you're unable to sit on an interview panel. And that is one other rule that I forgot to mention, is that with department head, we, some of them have asked to be able to sit on a panel, not to score, but sit, because they want to hear all the interviews. So, that is another area that we added that flexibility back in for them. So, for the board and the recent recruitments, you are not doing a panel interview. You are basically seeing all qualified applicants. So-
We've done it both ways over the years with the board, Pam. Certainly with the Public Health Officer and the recruitment that went on and on. We started with a panel, screening applicants, but as we moved forward, the candidate pools were smaller, so we just brought them all to you. So, if we have a lot of candidates, I think the board would want the panel reinstituted. That's been past practice.
Ms. Grant?
I would just say that your board can do it any way you want to, but I mean that quite literally, as long as you stay within the bounds of the law. You might now want a policy dictate in that case, because it's up to you whether you want to begin with a panel, or you want the interviews to come directly to you. And I would think as a board, and given the constraints on recruitments, et cetera, that you might want to keep that flexibility in the future. But that's up to you. If you prefer to have it institutionalized as a policy document, you can certainly do that, too.
Okay. And then, two more quick comments. And the only reason I brought it up is because I saw that it said, except for a Board of Supervisor, and maybe I wasn't thinking the difference between panel and actual interview. So, I was trying to figure out where do we fit in. On 503.2, we took out an entire section that says, "Promotional-only recruitment shall not be used if there is only one qualified potential applicant in county service." I'm a little nervous about that for the fact that that is something that I think the public constantly wants us to refrain from even the perception of looking like we're setting somebody specifically up to get into a position, rather than actually allowing it to be competitive. So, I would like for that to be back, just to, for that caution and cover.
And on that point, that's a point that I think is fairly important to the departments. That I would really love to bring back to the Class and Comp Committee to discuss their recommendation on that, because having the ability to promote, I mean, it, I think, is very important and not wait till there's multiple candidates, if you have an excellent candidate. Not that you're trying to, you know, stop other people, but I believe that flexibility is important and something I would definitely like to discuss with the Class and Comp Committee.
And then-
Ms. Grant?
Just from a legal perspective, I would say that that might be fine, as long as you have objective criteria. That would, that would solve some of your concerns in terms of subjectivity, but it would also make it clear that it's, it's not just, "Oh, there's nobody else out there, so I'm going with so-and-so." Because it's 1,000 employees.
Well, again, they have to apply and meet the minimum qualifications. So, they're meeting our minimum qualification standards. So, you cannot, besides the board may appoint, but you cannot promote somebody that doesn't meet those minimum qualifications.
Correct. And then, just two more things. One of them I was very confused about. For the promotional-only recruitments, it says, "These are the categories that you must meet: Be employed in a permanent extra-help county position." That makes perfect sense, but this one was slightly confusing. "Be eligible for a re-employment list for another position due to layoff." I take it layoff means due to unfortunate circumstances of not being able to budget for somebody to be in a position, and that we would have loved to keep them. So, it's not like they were asked to resign. I just, I kind of wanted to-
Correct.
-check in right here, because that's promotional within, but yet they're not there anymore. So, I just kind of wanted to-
Well, that just says if we have a layoff list, and we do a promotional-only, and that person would qualify, that we would need to notify them and allow them to interview for that job.
Okay.
As long as they meet the minimum qualifications, they're on an eligibility list for one year after the date of layoff.
Okay. And from what I believe, promotional is just as public as those positions that are flown in the open public as well. You could see that on our website when it says that.
Yes.
Therefore, if somebody has been laid off, they can go ahead and see that those things are available.
And HR would look at that list and probably send a notification saying, "There's a job that you're, you might be eligible for," and allow them to apply. We haven't had a layoff list, thank goodness. So, we haven't had that come up in my tenure.
Right. And then, my last thing is about the evaluation form. I appreciate it. I also know that it's going to be an interactive, interactive to a certain degree, PDF, or they can print it out and do it on paper. At one point, it would be really nice, something as simple as a Google form, where it actually keeps track of these things, so we can actually get data of just an idea of how things are going as a whole, not to, I mean, I guess a department head would want to see the specifics, but it's nice to be able to carry over some data and see how are things going in each department. How are, and I'm not asking the right questions, but it's data collection, that if it's just on paper, it doesn't really translate into data. It just translates in, you finish the paperwork. And it would be nice if we can use something that's available to us where it can collect that data, or we could do that in the future.
I think that's a future-dated project, but we do actually input the review score in the HRIS system, so that the review is done and that they meet, exceed needs improvement. If it's a needs improvement, then they must give the employee 90 days to get their, get their performance up to standards. So, we do collect some level of data, but I could only run it to the degree that our current system allows me to, which is not the best system.
Yeah, it's definitely limited. And my last part is on the evaluation. It does not state whether you're working in the office or working remotely or kind of a hybrid. And I think that's an important tag for us to learn as we continue to use remote work to understand, are people working from home doing a better job of keeping up with what they're expected to do by their directors, or are we seeing that things are kind of falling down as we do the remote work? I just think it would be a useful data point to collect.
And we do, within the HRIS system currently, we can select, yes, they are a remote worker or no, but we don't have the capacity to say it's one day, five days, two days, permanent. So, you could add, oh, sorry. Scared myself. You could add that to a report to collect that data. Again, we're a little limited on the reporting side of things, but yes, we could collect that data.
That's it.
Any other comments from the board members?
Appreciate the work being done, obviously. Kidding our vacancies filled is something very important. I know the hard work that's been done to get to this point is greatly appreciated. I know Supervisor Sabatier had about five or six things that were suggested. I thought I heard Pam, as we move forward in this conversation, that there were a couple, at least the first one, I think you were amenable to changing some language. You guys can help me go to each section, come here with 502 or 503, whatever it is. But what I would like to do, from my point of view, I think some of the changes being suggested, I think two of them you were like, "Yeah, we could be amenable to." Instead of going back to the Class and Comp, I'm ready to move forward with some of the suggestions at this point and keep, you know, keep this process moving forward. So, those are my thoughts on it. Not going to spend a lot of time. I appreciate the work, and we know that there will be more work like this coming down the pipe. But anything we can do to help support our directors to streamline this opportunity for them- for them, I think we just need to take every chance we can. And it's not going to be perfect. But I think supervisors about they made some good suggestions that maybe we could change today, but continue moving on with this process and hopefully approve this today. Those are, I guess when we make the motion, that's what we'll be thinking about. I'd rather not have it go back to the Class and Comp Committee. I'd rather move forward with something today. That's-
Well, we're hoping to do both. Quite honestly, is move forward with something today and then go back and have a few discussion points with the Class and Comp Committee, but not hold up what's recommended for today. But we could definitely walk through the suggested changes and tell you which ones we think could change now versus the ones we would take to committee. So we get some action today and can implement some things immediately. And there are, I see at least one or two department heads. I don't know if they wanted to comment on this. They were all a part of the discussion that led us to this point.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yes, go ahead, Todd.
Yes, thank you. Todd Metcalf, Director of Behavioral Services. Yes, I was involved in these discussions and conversations, and I just, I do want to thank Human Resources for all of this work and how I can already see it's helping streamline things and especially helping speed up the recruitment process. So I support everything that's been said today. I appreciate the board members' comments, and I fully support moving all of this forward because it's been, it's just been amazing. My managers and supervisors are especially thankful for the streamlined performance evaluation form template, which I too really like. So I just want to thank the work at Human Resources in trying to move a lot of this forward. I've been now with the county for 10 years, and I truly appreciate these changes, these positive changes. So thank you, Human Resources.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any other directors that have any insight? Not seeing any.
So Mr. Chair, maybe we could just run through the list of supervisors about these-
I had one. I just wanted to, yeah. My only thing was, so I was looking at when it came to taking, you know, having an applicant apply so many times, so they become to a point where they don't, they're not really accepted for application any longer. There's a specific situation with, a situation in code enforcement, and I think Carol knows who I'm talking about and what I'm talking about, where the gentleman, during the timeframe, we were having a hard time recruiting and keeping anybody for code enforcement. This person apparently didn't have any qualifications when it came to the code factor to it. However, in some instances, that's, I don't know how that would even work out. I mean, they would have to either, you know, probably get their own education or however. But is there a path forward for like 900 hours or part-time to get that initial? Because there's some candidates that could do the work, and once they get that experience, and then they can be promoted or even put in the position, because this person and a couple of other situations as well had the opportunity to be chosen third in line because the other two are not allowed. So at one time could have been hired, but then now is excluded, and you've probably had possibly a good candidate. And I know not all of them are, but some of them will be, you know, and so, yeah.
Well, I think extra help also have to meet minimum qualifications to apply for the job. So what we would have to do if there was a circumstances is to create a training position, which would allow them to gain that experience. There's also some rules in which we could open the recruitment in a certain way to allow you to gain up to one year of experience on the job. So there are ways to look at that if the department wants to work with HR. We also suggest that when we're looking at the candidate pool, but you've got to advertise that upfront-
Okay.
-that you're allowing for that training. And I think, you know, that's why some of our minimum qualifications have been reduced is because we had some limited applicant pools, and it allows people to get training on the job.
Right. Well, and I only say that because when we were in the specific situation, we weren't getting anybody hired. It was a very difficult thing. We had a lot of people in different town halls that were like, we don't have code enforcement officers, this and that. Of course, so I do like what you stated, rather than having it avoid the, or circumvent or anything like that, have a training position situation or something like that. Something we could probably look at in the future. But I just, I needed to highlight that because at one time, the person was possibly going to be hired, so.
Well, I think we have to put our heads together and work around a situation like that, and communication is just key in developing that.
All right. Ms. Grant, did you have, did you put your, I thought I heard the thing go-
Click. Sorry, that was, she clicked it really loud.
I do, I don't know why. It's not aggression. I'm not an aggressive person. The only thing I was going to say is when you're talking about somebody who doesn't meet the minimum qualifications for a position, they're not eligible for the interview, obviously. So if you're talking about developing a new training position, that would legally afford you a solution.
Right. And the training assignment allows somebody who is not fully qualified to serve in a training capacity for 12 months while they attain those qualifications. It's a rule we added a couple of years ago. It's not widely used. I used it at DSS over the years, because it was a rule that was in the LAPS manual, but what's not in county personnel rules. We also had additional rules that DSS was subject to under the State Personnel Board. I had some success with that rule over the years. In fact, a lot of success, where I had a real critical need and nobody with quite the right qualifications. So we brought them in in a training capacity, and they succeeded. So we'd like to encourage departments to consider the use of that rule.
Thank you. That helps for what I was talking about. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. You mentioned to do more on social media. Are we capturing where candidates come from and what brought them to us?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I just wasn't sure how successful social media is for the recruiting of positions. It's definitely a good place to put out information, but I wasn't certain as to what level of-
It's provided they actually enter that information on their application, but many do. And so we do track that, because we're trying some new things, and we want to know what's driving candidates to us.
I'm glad we're tracking that.
I seen Todd had his hand up. Director Metcalf?
Oh, I did, and Carol already covered it. You know, when she and I were at DSS, the whole training position thing, I also utilized it a time or two, and it's extremely effective in order to fill positions that are either difficult to fill or we don't get folks applying. And so I just kind of wanted to reinforce what Carol said, because it does work. It really does work.
Thank you, Director Metcalf. Are there any other questions from the board? I'll open it up to public input. If there's anyone on Zoom, because I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers. Not seeing anybody. I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, could we run down the revisions so you would know what that action would be?
Yes. Let's go through those.
Well, first of all, with respect to the evaluation form, that is not a form. That is a part of the board's approval process. We were just sharing it with you because we're excited, and it's a byproduct of this effort. But from my view, it'd be very easy, and in fact, a good point the supervisor's making, to put a checkbox on there about whether they are remote or in person, however you want to state that, Pam. And then there are some typographical errors. Those, you know, just words that are missing or not quite right here, all of those should be relatively easy fixes and a cleanup, right, Pam? Unfortunately, I can't see the strikeout version. So for whatever reason, I think when it was made into a PDF, it didn't transfer over. Could you see the strikeout version?
Yeah, I requested the redlined version specifically.
So Pam, do you have a paper version of it, so we could kind of talk it through? So look at Section 503, which is on page four of the new policy. And Supervisor, would you help me? It says, in quotes, it says "or slash or," right? It should probably be "and/or"?
"And/or."
Yeah.
Okay. So that, we'll make that fix?
Yep.
Next, Section 503.1B, which is about the closing of recruitments and the recommendation that the hiring departments be allowed to make that call. We'd like to take that one to Class and Comp, please. The next one, 503.2, this is the one about promotional-only recruitment and a single applicant. We'd also like to take that one to Class and Comp. Section 504, to allow hiring departments to state where they can post recruitments. As Pam explained, they already state that when they request the recruitment in Neilgov. So I think we've got that one covered. Section 505, number two there, states that the HR director has the ability to close a recruitment prior to the five days. I think this is, is this related to the other one?
This is the same request of that it should be the hiring department.
And so for that one, again, Class and Comp, please. Section 602.3BI should say that then the job descriptions requirements shall apply instead of deadlines shall apply. Is that just a typo, Pam?
Yes.
Okay, we'll fix that. Section 603.5 should be five working days. And we talked about taking that to Class and Comp, but I think the bigger point is that in some places it says working days and some places says calendar days. Do you want to take that one to Class and Comp, Pam, or do you want to just make a call?
I think we can make that five working days, and then we don't have to build recruitments around holiday and things of that nature.
Great. Section 703.2, active board of supervisors members may not serve on a panel.
We can ignore that one.
Yeah, okay. Either 7.3 needs to reorganize the list, or we need to change to 7.03.1 and .2. It just doesn't read quite well. Pam, what are you seeing there?
That's just a cleanup.
Yeah.
We'll clean that up.
Okay. And last one, I think, section, second paragraph of 802, there's two, the word "the" is said twice, right?
Yeah, they're receiving the list.
We'll update that.
And can I just add something? Sorry. For 503.1B, where it states may be closed at any time, this is specific to continuous recruitment. So the continuous recruitment, if there's only one vacancy and the department has already decided on an applicant to hire, and they've gone through background and medical, HR would, there wouldn't be an additional vacancy for an additional applicant or employee. So I believe we can keep it as HR can decide to close, because it's specific for a continuous recruitment only.
If it's possible to say if all vacancies filled, because right now it just says, "open until filled, do not have a closing date, and may be closed at any time," but it doesn't specify.
Okay.
And again, it's to make sure that we're working directly with our hiring department so that we don't accidentally stumble their efforts by closing something down early, which, again, I'm assuming that that doesn't happen.
Yes.
But I know it does, because I've experienced HR in different places, and it's accidents that happen if we have it on paper, that that's what needs to happen.
But won't that limit their ability if something else were to happen, and maybe that position is no longer needed? They wouldn't be able to close it because it hasn't been filled? It just almost seems better to leave it more open where they have that ability to close it.
But to me, the hiring department can do that anytime. And I'm asking HR to help me hire somebody. HR closes, and I say, I didn't want you to close it. I feel there needs to be, that, in my opinion, if it's full and there's no vacancies, absolutely, that makes perfect sense to close it. But if it's not full and there's still vacancies, in my opinion, it requires communication with the hiring department to make sure, is this what you want for us to close this? Because I don't want to close something that you still want us to remain open. That's all I'm trying to make sure is the original request comes from the hiring department. If you're going to change their request, it's just kindness to ask that hiring department, should we change the status of this, rather than we're going to change it, because it feels like that's what we should do.
So, yeah, and I heard that, and I thought when we went through it the first time, Pam, I thought maybe we could just add some language in there that just clarifies exactly what Supervisor Sabatier is saying, that you're, before you close it, you're communicating with the department. And I don't know where to put that language in there, but it could be written in there, I think, in that manner, because I think what you really brought to the table was, hey, this just says HR can do it, and it doesn't say you're going to communicate with anybody before you make that decision. And I think what we want is to make sure that that's written in that section, which I agree with, that you've conferred with the department that's doing the hiring, and we've agreed that we're going to close it. So I understand both sides. I don't think it limits Human Resources to say, hey, we got to close this, so I got to get ahold of the department, you know what I mean, so we can help them. So hopefully-
Also, if there's a mistake, generally, I mean, HR goes through a process of verifying that it's an allocated and funded position before we open it. But say it did squeak through due to an error, it gives us the ability to close it if it's not something that should be posted. Also, if things age out and the department doesn't go back and close out their recruitments, it gives HR the ability to close out and get things off, because that also skews our time to hire.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to?
I was just going to say, you could just add, maybe closed at any time upon concurrence of the appointing department.
Yeah.
And then you're done. As far as the first example where somebody's, where the recruitment isn't eligible for recruitment, you don't need this for that. It can't be open, so it can be just, it can be closed, and HR could certainly do it. So you won't need the language for that. But that would be just a quick legal fix.
That's by Supervisor Sabatier. I think that's a fix right there.
I'm not looking to create a whole step. I just think it's to ensure that there's communication, because I've experienced enough different types of HRs that sometimes those things do happen. And if we can set it in our policy, then maybe we can reduce that potential of those times happening. But I understand the reasons of HR wanting to say, hey, we need to close this. So I don't think that that precludes you from doing that, just making sure that we have that communication, which I think happens anyways.
All right. I think it looks like we're ready for action.
Okay. So then that one would state HR may close it with the concurrence of the hiring department. So a few things to take to the Class and Comp Committee and the rest for approval today.
And I appreciated the document, because I was not aware of every little bit of detail of that document. You only know what you know. And so seeing, you know, more of these things, I had the same kind of reflection on the data that we received from Behavioral Health this morning. Seeing more and better understanding is very useful, and I appreciate the review of the document as well as being able to go through the document. So thank you so much.
So just clarification on the motions as we move forward here. Carol, you stated that the interview process, let's see, approved changes policy applicant interview process, or the evaluation isn't part of it, all right. So I just want to make sure. We're going to do three motions?
Let me go back to that supervisor. Let's see.
It says approved changes to county policies surrounding applicant interview processes. And then the next is?
Well, what we have actually is a number of rule numbers that we are changing. So we probably need to change the action to the actual rules that we're talking about. So Anita, unless you disagree with me, that's what I think we should do.
Is that the 100, 400, 800?
Yes. Or perhaps just approved changes to the personnel rules as-
As presented and as consensus was reached by the board.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion to end a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you for these updates, and thank you for your hard work. All right.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Diana.